Okay. All right, let's bring this May third twenty twenty twenty-three meeting to order. And Ms. Taylor, would you lead us in? Is Eddie?
Well, I guess you had anything happening, so it looks like he does nothing.
Okay. I can make a motion to approve first half payroll five on favor. Bouchers and invoices.
Are you going to approve the fire wings today or are you going to hold those off?
I was going to go ahead and I've looked through them all. I'm gonna meet with some departments on the way stuff is put together, probably on Thursdays. So I was gonna go ahead and approve these today.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, all in favor. Meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes before eighteen.
Second, all in favor.
I made the motion to approve this. Senate seven second. Rules?
Okay, the first thing on the list is. Our county clerk has the letter. It should be my office taking the minutes, someone in my office. People taking the minutes. With my responsibility to lay its cycle through there in the year where I saw anybody on staff or myself available to take them and do their justice. So I feel like this is certain time of that with my arm, you guys have a good flow with Amy doing them. Or somebody else even, so I'm always going to the level of need, but I just thought that might. There in the whole scheme of. Do you want to ask again that the minutes be? They should. In my office. The the final approved topic is top Tom or President St. John. I was saying that the report, I have part of my business that they are not official record.
How do you want to do that? How do you want to do that? You want to do it once a year or?
I mean, I would get after it immediately.
Okay.
Yeah, instead of having a whole.
That's what it should be.
Show when I talked about this yesterday, I talked about doing this. This is in addition to the website.
So, yeah, can you guys get us a list of of any meeting you don't have?
We've got that for.
You've not had any in like since.
The last minutes book I saw yesterday in there is from like the eighteen hundreds.
Never, um.
Sorry. It's handwritten, yeah.
We did decide to do that. Okay, so can we get all the minutes from Michelle's office?
Yeah, I thought she had them.
They're all scanned from seventy-eight before Wilbert scanned them and they're on the website so we can give him, give her the. The paper copies.
You don't need to print out that one soon. No, I mean, what we do is we take the paper, I scan it in and I normally what happens is the original is back to me.
We have scanned copies, so why don't just get Wilbert to figure out how to.
Yeah, if they're the ones that are having head on. I would prefer to have the order on this.
Well, that's probably what he has.
Yeah, isn't that what? That was after the meeting there.
So there are, there are a couple of years, sorry, I just tripped myself. Um, there are a couple of years that we were just doing it electronically. Um, the ones that were typed on typewriter, I think they are the ones that you scanned and those are on the website with signatures from previous years. So we will have to probably, I don't know if you scanned the current, the last ten years or so books with the signatures, okay?
No, but how how back? Farm do it, I mean, you know, certainly around the ten year.
I think we can aim to go back as far as we can, but let's start with present and go backwards. Yeah, and that way everything's up to date, just.
I don't know why I want it. And and sometimes I found through years, people started calling things different things. Like there's other books back there that are order books, but they're really more like minutes. And then there's a couple of books called records and those are also. So. Where are we going off to that from the bottom of the guy, do you call it something? I'd say go on slide.
Let's escape that and then we'll find a bunch of other topics. Well, I I think that's fine and I appreciate that you're willing to fill in and we don't have somebody, that'd be great.
Yeah, no problem.
So I'm glad that we approve the county clerk's request that we took over the minute responsibilities.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
And also that the minutes gets recorded in her office. Thank you. What else you got?
So the next thing is. W B four entrance policy middle. For. For. I think it's mandatory was the thing. Was last year.
And nothing was glaring out when I read over.
Star insurance.
I make a motion to approve second on. Hey, Ruth, I'll say.
Okay, the next thing is three point of the day new. You know, boss, yes, the president started. Can we prove it?
I make the motion to approve Dan. Feel for.
If you have your hearing tape, you do, we both have our.
And neither one of us can hear. Well, I'll go ahead and do both firsts, the second to both firsts that I heard. All in favor. All right. Ruth.
All right, the next thing is the request for that new free K eight from the principal Melissa Hara. This is our M O U for the board that can use the law really as emergency act really been dealt here and we have this task.
Auto renewable, yeah, can we do that, Anthony? Yeah, because you shouldn't have to come in every year, I mean, we're not going to say no. Okay.
Are you. It'll renew each year and. Uh, we've changed it so the news is here in the most.
Do I write a statement to that effect at the bottom because she hasn't signed, well, she did sign it, but she can initiate it. And then we'll just. We'll shop. Automatically renew annually.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Taylor.
His name is already signed.
Yeah, she can sign again.
If I change.
Look the letter now. I mean, really, it's not going to be a problem unless somebody contests it.
Yeah, I know.
So you just stamp it, Ruth, that you're, you gotta make changes?
Well, you sign it.
I signed it out.
Oh, okay, okay, we're waiting on the change, okay.
Um, search will be fine. But if you don't have to, it's nothing here.
You know, make a lot of changes like that, so you can. And we'll move on to the other one.
Yeah, let's keep going. Uh, so second. Nice one. Again, it's somewhat of a delay. Um, so Kevin, I put Kevin. And he does, he talked to Rock Solid and they can replace it. John, you know what this is, the H A E unit, which I understand is less for the amount we have to do without. And I said, and then you get it done today.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good unit. And sixteen nine ninety is in the bad price.
Yeah, because the.
So I'll make a motion to approve the expense of sixteen thousand nine hundred ninety dollars, nine hundred dollars and ninety cents for the remove, removal and replacement of a second tank at the animal shelter.
So I'm just, I may go remove them.
Yeah, but they could install, because they can install different.
Second, all in favor.
You signed on.
Okay, I said usually there's one. I'll read, I'll read it, yeah.
No, you must sign it without marking through the facts. But we added this similar you law that as we renew at the conclusion of the term, it will be one year from the date of acceptance by parties. Either party may terminate M O U with thirty days notice of.
The next two items are Anthony, and we have four. That was the one, it's not what you're talking to, what you.
Say it'd be forty minutes, yeah.
Okay. So I kind of inherited a rather bizarre scenario in the prosecutor's office with the printers. The printer copier, the main printer copier that we have is so old that if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Taylor is actually listed as one of the mailboxes.
I am.
So that should give you an idea of how old it is and since I've taken it, we've had some some issues with it. The other rather bizarre. Aspect of how we do things in the prosecutor's office, instead of having main printers, every single employee has a printer sitting on their desk. Which, of course, there's a cost to buy those printers and then more importantly, there's a cost of buying the toner card. So my proposal will be to replace the existing printer. Uh, and also get a main printer for the second floor. Uh, and over time, we're going to phase out the desktop printers, we're going to have one useful brand. Um, and. At the present, thirty thousand dollars in the prosecutor's office asset forfeiture account. Um, I would asking for the county commission's blessing to use that money to purchase the two main printers, the one downstairs, it's going to be forty-two hundred. Um, it's a slight upgrade instead of forty-five pages a minute, it will be sixty pages a minute. The copier I'm going to get upstairs is twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars, the total is sixty-nine and fifty for those two. They're both colored printers, they'll run upstairs, they say a little bit slower, it's forty-five pages a minute. But I think this will overall increase the efficiency of the office in the long run and will save the county money. What I need from the county is the annual maintenance contract that we have now, I have no budget line. I have no budget line to cover maintenance on printers. That is currently being provided by the county, I don't know why it's set up that way, but that's how it's set up. Current maintenance package on our printer. Um, is roughly, remember correctly, thirteen hundred, thirteen hundred. A year. The increase in cost will be fourteen, it'll go up to fourteen sixty-five. Um, I'm sorry, yeah, fourteen sixty-five, so it's going to be about a hundred and sixty-five dollars more for the maintenance contract. Um, the only other financial assistance I'm asking from the county commission is to get the main printer on the second floor in place. We're going to need an ethernet cord and we're also going to need a phone line installed. So I'm going to ask you guys to put it over that, like I said, I'll, I will pay for these copiers to have the asset forfeiture. Um, I don't. Feel like I can come up with a commission with straight base and say I need this money, so that was dollars in the asset. So that was my proposal. Um, so like I said, but I need to use an extra one sixty-five a year to cover the maintenance costs. And then the cost to install the ethernet cord and phone, so we can count some of the centers as well.
Do you know what the cost to ethernet cord?
To be honest with you, Tom, I don't. I can't imagine it's going to be significant because there's already ethernet. There's, there's phone lines already throughout the office, it's already ethernet cables throughout the office. There is actually already an ethernet cable. Things were done in the office for the I T prior to me taking office that.
They did their own I T.
They did their own I T. It looks like, basically, there's a cable that comes out of Wes's office and it basically stapled to the wall. And it runs out to where the copier would need to go. I would like to. Do a little more professionally and have it put in the wall so that we don't have to look at it. So somebody was to trip over it, but but Tom, I can't answer your question. G S D has come and looked at it, they hadn't given the uprights, but I don't imagine it's going to be.
You could take a hammer and hit it.
They don't want some cable just ran down the hallway.
I agree with her, not.
I have no problem with doing this.
No, I think that's.
And and I don't know that I need the commission's approval to use the asset forfeiture money, but um, just to make sure there isn't a problem, I wanted to be transparent about it. For that to you and to add a minimum, ask your blessing, if you feel like you need to approve it, ask for your approval.
Well, I don't have a problem, bro, do you think we should approve a certain amount or just?
Well, I don't think that we have to approve this asset forfeiture.
No, no, I'm.
Yeah, but I'm happy to approve the rest of it.
Yeah.
And we approve prosecuting the change.
I think I approve, uh, I'll second. All in favor.
Aye.
I think you do. Put back to them. And that's why, okay. So you have.
Yeah, I was going to say, Sue Wood.
Hello. My name is Sue Wood and I work with the Bay of Provincial Foundation and they're working for communities. That program focuses on beating someone leaving alcohol and tobacco, using someone middle school or high school students. We do that in various ways. We do parent education, we work closely with the schools and we try and change their environment for the positive. Um, there are some other things that we can do at a local level to help reduce vaping and youth values. Bay County is poised for economic growth, especially considering our new national park designation. But we would like to make sure that we are, we are growing in a healthy direction, uh, not just economically, but also for the physical well being of our students and our young people. We know that what kids see every day becomes more of them. In February, a vape shop opened within walking distance, less than a third of a mile from school. I can actually see it if I'm standing in front of that elementary school. That shop that opened is also um, maybe two hundred feet from the community center in that town. Um, that's a place where I would typically allow my son to walk from the community center to the Dollar General. And now he has passive vape shop and I have to worry about those parents as well. Three new vape smoke shops have opened in Bay County in less than one year and another one is getting ready to open. Right across the street from one that currently exists. These shops offer a lot more than tobacco and nicotine products. And we know that most addiction begins in the teen years. And we are looking to provide clear boundaries to help protect our kids. I have some local data to share. At the end of January, I was contacted by um, an officer from the sheriff's department. A parent called to me because their child was able to come into possession of over three hundred dollars for the vape products and paraphernalia. And because of that, we inspected using a youth inspector who's sixteen years old, six of the vape shops that were open at the time. Two of them sold, so that's thirty-three percent of the stores that we inspected sold to our youth. Each year we do a survey in the high schools with collaboration, the health department and Katie Johnson, the I surveys. We know that last year, fifteen percent of our middle school students told us that they vape and twenty-two percent of our high school students. Um, we.
That's gotta be low.
Well. Still, if you consider.
Teen court. And all we have, yes, teen court is on there as well.
Um, ninety percent of our teen court cases involve vaping. Um, so this is an issue in our county and we do need to address it. All, all around. Um, and we have great support, um, we have great support with us here today. Uh, we are asking to work with you to draft an ordinance that defines vape shops. That sets a minimum distance of these vape shops from schools and community centers and youth serving areas. That sets a minimum distance of these vape shops from the other tobacco retailers and each other. Because as the retail density of these stores increases, the rates of tobacco use in the community of those stores increases. Um, we'd also like to set a limit of the number of vape and smoke shops based on the population of Bay County. Uh, there was a bill that was introduced into the House, it did not reach the Senate during this session, but it suggested um, reducing or limiting the number of vape shops to one per fifteen thousand residents. We are currently one per fifty-two hundred residents, so it's just something to have it just. Now. Bay County is a leader in the state for prevention and for. The people in this room care deeply about protecting our youth and putting the barriers in place. Um, to encourage them to make good decisions and prevent them from getting their hands on things that that they shouldn't. Um, we also feel strongly that when the county takes up this ordinance, that the towns will take up this ordinance as well and that they're looking to the county for leadership. And if that could happen, that would gently create a more cohesive effort and.
Yeah, that's one of my questions is the cities, we can't, does have any authority over the municipalities? And I think most of them are in the municipalities, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm guessing.
Well, uh, the vape shops, yes, but there are schools that are covered by the county and it would be setting the example to protect those schools. I do have a letter of support from the town of Anstead, um, I am looking to speak with the town of Oak Hill and just go around and ask for support from all the municipalities. But if there was already a framework in place and a policy of like.
You also have one from.
Yes. And he is also a teacher and he is well aware of the issues that our schools and our parents are facing.
And um, this weekend, after reading through the the packet that we received, I drove just the city of Oak Hill. There are fifteen additional places that sell vape and some sell paraphernalia. Rover, BP Mount near Mart, Dollar General. One stop, kill, stop and go, the mobile stations. Home Mac Liquor, Family Dollar, BP Little General, Rants, Home Mac. Exxon Little General, Quick Check and Dollar General. It's a huge issue.
It is.
Not only with the vape stores, but all of these stores, when you go in, they have signage. Um, they have signage outside in some locations. And and it it is, I mean, it's a major issue. While I will agree that we need to have something done, I don't see how. We can regulate what goes on inside these toiletries. In the municipalities, that was one of my big issue, you know? Yeah, I mean, that's, I'm saying you're not, you know, I think you're right too, but that's why I've mentioned first municipalities, that's where majority of them are. We have no say so at all in the municipalities.
I understand that.
You just want, you want the county to. Well, that's why I said you want the county to be involved, say this is what we think it should be out in county, in county level, in the county. And then maybe they would follow, you know, and and I see where you're going with that and I wouldn't have a problem with that, but I don't think municipalities ever listens to county anyway.
I think it would definitely provide the framework and the wording and provide for consistency. The the vape shop that opened near a school. The town wasn't even thinking that that is something that could happen, that they would need a stopgap in place. What I'm saying is, let's address the schools that are within the county's reach and put that prevention there. And. I will do all I can to communicate with municipalities and hope that they take this up as well. Now, they may not be able to do anything about the existing stores, they may choose a grandfather clause for those, but to prevent more stores from opening near our schools. And creating a situation where we are. Strip malls of vape shops, like you've seen in other.
Have you even talked to any municipalities, get feedback from them at all?
Yes, I have a letter of support from the town of Anstead and and I will be speaking with the city of Oak Hill.
I don't know if we have the ability to do this, Anthony, I'm looking at you. What about penalties for, you know, right now, we're using, we use state code for those who sell to minors. Is there, can the county enact an ordinance that? Um, creates a greater penalty for that?
It's actually in our. It's for submission of minors to vape shops. But there is not penalty. So that would certainly be something where code already does exist, that you could add penalty for and create.
We're talking about prosecuting something where they sell to minors. I mean, I think what we're talking.
Or even letting them hang out in their vape shop.
I I think what you're talking about or what you're talking about is adopting an order. Did this. A business. Distributing vape products within X number of feet of uh, educational. Yeah. Which I think is. Same.
It is.
Your population.
It is, but I'm thinking about the problem, not this particular, just this solution, I was just.
I don't think, I don't think we ended up with. An ordinance that covers the same ground as the state statute and imposes a greater penalty, that's problematic, but if we adopt a different statute that addresses a different facet of the problem, I think we'd be okay with that.
I'd also like to point out that that penalty for a first offense at a store is fifty dollars.
Oh, I know, I know, it's like all this stuff.
It's.
And it never gets paid anyway, like it's not.
Well, I'd also like to see us draft a letter to our representatives, House, Senate. Um, even send it to the president and speaker of the house. Letting them know that, you know, we have this issue going on within recent walk, those schools. And we'd like to see a bill drafted by the state that limits the number where it comes to a school. So to the gambling, drinking.
Um, there is only one example in West Virginia, the city of Charleston, West Virginia does have an ordinance that limits distance.
Well, so what would next steps be? I mean, is do you? Can't we get somebody to draft? What, a draft that we can look at? Ordinance or can you come to us with something, you know, drafted embedded and it was something to consider?
I've lost, would you say can I all sit, can I? Okay. There's that one exactly.
Yeah, I saw it in there. So. If you guys can get us a draft, you know, with your recommendations. So if you guys can get us a draft, you know, with your recommendations, because I feel like. We do them really well here in Fayette County from the health perspective in particular, so, you know, we might be able to improve a problem on Charleston.
That'd be excellent.
And we're more rural than Charleston, so we.
We also have other prevention organizations that are um looking to us as a leader to show them how to do this in their communities and in their counties. And so, um and I mean, Fayette County is very well known across the state and even across the nation for being the leader in preventing, trying to protect our kids. You know, from all of the terrible things that can happen. And so I've, I'm excited to know the commission is willing to work.
Yeah, I guess you can get us something and I mean, definitely run it past Anthony before it gets on our agenda. Um, you know, I'd love to see something.
And the city of Montgomery has an ordinance that limits the type of product that they can sell.
And that's what Melissa and Lauren is doing, the flavorless, the most of the regulation is on flavored products. Um but they are moving forward since it is another.
He loves his brave debate. I'm just saying, if they stop selling it in flavors, Jamie is gonna be crushed, because he has huge bricks that are different flavors and.
Alright, thank you.
I appreciate you doing all the work to put this together for us, this is a very good package to receive before a presentation.
And we're happy that everyone came in with you, we meet.
All that support.
Every other week, so please come and see us more often. We have to give more cheers in here though. Alright, nine thirty Angela?
Thanks, everybody. So I will quickly let you know. That the planning commission got their presentation for next on Monday. And they unanimously voted to accept the draft plan with there's two map changes. And I'll give you guys a map. So we had a member of the public who was concerned about the property he owned. And he requested that um they changed the map. He owned a piece of property out of sixteen, um that was, it was an odd situation half. He'd get his snacks in Fayetteville, but half of his property is county theoretically. And it was showing rural residential, he wanted to be more commercial note because rest of his business. Um and he owned another piece of property out lookout area that was um. Rural reserve and everything around it was rural residential, so they voted to make that change to follow along with the rest of it. But other than that, um make it long, so if you wanna let him do a quick degree on what's going on, that would be helpful. Alright, Nick.
Okay, thank you. So I'll just share my screen.
We can hear.
Are you able to see my screen?
It's taking a second.
Yeah, now I can.
Alright, let me swap this. So just to follow up on our our last uh discussion a month ago. We did go through and made quite a few revisions, so I know Angel, I had the the full packet, the breakdown matrix of all the different. Uh comments that had been received, both from the open house, from the online uh survey, also from follow-up phone calls or discussions that we had with some key stakeholders. Working with the county, working with the planning commission and working with the the commissioners. And having gone through all those different revisions, I would say for the most part, they were not substantial revisions, there were a few that. Did sort of um maybe rise to the top and we did consider as as maybe more major plan revisions. Uh so we thought we would just highlight some of those in our our discussion today. Um some of those included, and there was really five or six, um the Smithers in Montgomery being added to the Fayette Gateway Priority Growth Area. That's both something the planning commission brought up, that had been something that came out of the public open house when we were in Smithers. Um and it also just came out of a discussion that we had had with with you as a group. Um we also revised the broadband data, so we were able to um provided by the uh. Uh West Virginia Office Broadband, able to update that information to be more consistent with what's happening on the ground and also what the plans are for broadband in the region. Um so that's been updated and the source has been included. Uh we did revise uh the mineral extraction data, there was just a data error that was being projected. So we removed that mine that was shown near Fayetteville. The lit, that impacted the land use plan map, that also impacted economic development, housing and mineral extraction, so all four of those maps were updated. Um throughout the entire plan, we included WVU's extension as a partner. Uh talked about how they could be a a support or a resource for the county moving forward, so. Um Lauren Weatherford, having worked with Lauren Weatherford, she helped us kind of identify areas that would be uh strategic input points from WVU extension. And then also as part of the action matrix, at the end of the report, we identified. Uh where WVU extension would be an appropriate resource or partner, uh just for some future implementation efforts. Uh and then the last one was, we added a discussion on the Route nineteen corridor, recommending conducting a corridor plan. And I'll just, I'll go to that on page sixty-seven, the Route nineteen corridor plan recommendation. The county should consider developing a detailed Route nineteen corridor plan to identify appropriate areas for development and preservation. The Route nineteen corridor plan could include design guidelines to clearly describe the recommended use, scale and location intended for future development. Um so that was, that was the change that we had made, is it related to the Route nineteen corridor based on our discussion with planning commission and also the discussion we had. Uh with this group when we last met. And then Angela already uh talked about this and I just wanted to show, the planning commission unanimously voted. For two land use cha- uh land use map changes, so the the map on the left is what was existing um in terms of our initial recommendation. And the revised feature land use map is what you see on the right, uh based on the planning commission's decision. And uh so just changing that from residential to commercial and then the other.
We're not saying a map on the left and right, we still still see the major plan revision slide.
Oh, alright, you know what, it might be going. Did it show up or no? Okay, sorry, might be just a lag, my bad, um so yeah, they had recommended. We had on the left uh that as as residential, their unanimous vote was to revise that to commercial uh along Route sixteen. And um. The other one was for the existing future land use that we had identified on the left uh as rural, they had identified as rural residential. Um and so that was another vote that was unanimous. And so those are, I I would say for the most part, a majority of the revisions, we did give a matrix of all the other comments that we had addressed, there were, there were quite a few. Um but I would say for the most part, they were either straightforward, we agreed, it was an oversight, whatever it might be. Um and had, having coordinated with the county and also with New River Gorge RDA, we made the revisions that we felt were appropriate to the draft plan. Um so with that, I I didn't know if the the commissioners, if you had questions for us, um if there were other things that you wanted to discuss, I can pull up the plan. Uh we can go through that, otherwise, like Angela said, the planning commission had made a um or had approved the plan as it. As assuming we would make these two lane use changes, so we have, we've made them up to this point, so if you do agree with them, we would, we would continue moving forward with this. This current draft. So any questions from, sorry, go ahead.
I'm good. Since it's to the newspapers, anybody here would like to make comment concerning the comprehensive plan?
Anybody online?
Okay, so no one wants to make a comment, so. Okay. Make a motion to approve the. Oh, favor.
Uh you were breaking up, did we just vote? Okay, all right, that's great.
As long as the management.
To do a research that way.
But I think I'm gonna suggest, I'm I'm gonna push towards that, it's something that I think we should. I'd like to throw the UDC away, but. Now we're gonna have a big copy of the final version.
Um I guess you will remove the draft where the draft plan and you guys' paper copies, I'm trying, I don't wanna spread a bunch just for them to sit in the office.
That's the first thing I asked for when I got here, yeah.
I'll leave my results.
Anybody wanna take a break? I guess we need a break. Alright, I can bring the meeting back to order. Probation, Jared? Come on up here.
The reason is it's on Zoom, so that helps the people out there here.
Um as the commission's aware, uh we've been discussing, maybe the permission department across the street that are all spaced in the county. Uh and uh we've been working on getting that renovated with the commission, obviously. Um and that's coming along great. Uh we had um some officials from across the country today. Uh to look over the structure and see what it needed as far as security apparatus, video cameras. Um and uh entering access points and things like that. Um anyone that gave us a diagram of what needs to be where and how much we needed. Um then gives grant application for the Division of uh Municipal Services, Justice, Justice and Community Services. Their Court Security Fund uh program, so what we're doing is um. Ultimately, in a perfect world, I would have had this uh application six, eight weeks ago when you had plenty of time to get this through and everything else, but. Um thankful for the assistance of one of my officers, um Jim Sizemore. Uh who you guys may know, worked for the Sheriff's Department, wants all of this grant money.
He's a great writer.
Yeah, and so he helped me put this together. Um there's still a couple pieces that we think to put on it, um but I had KTS security come out yesterday to do as an additional step. For for amount of money, uh and the grant, the grant uh application is pretty much built out. We still have to have some signatures, um with mission president, after a few letters signed. Um about chief judge and chief judge has been out of town the last few days, uh the uh the uh circuit clerk. Um chief master and a few other people have to write letters of support. Um there's a possibility that we might have to have an impromptu court security meeting, the necessities of the grant. Um and then we have had this all turned in by the tenth, uh which next next one. So um I've given the, I've given the application last Friday. Um I unfortunately have a stomach virus during the weekend and lost the day Monday and work. Luckily, Officer Sizemore worked on it in my absence, uh and has a, has a pretty comprehensive program. Um package put together here, uh talked to you earlier this morning. Uh to show you the couple of numbers didn't match, because KTS gave us a new revised estimates uh after hours of today. Got those numbers fixed, the only thing that would be different is. Uh in the itemization, um Officer Sizemore wrote down the labor and installation from the actual equipment. I'm not quite sure what that breakdown would be now, he didn't be here this afternoon after a medical appointment. But I'll get back over the pen and we'll fix those and adjust those before we send it in. Um so uh I have package here if the if the commission would like to look it over, um. I don't know if it needs signed today actually, but just needs voted on that the commission can support and.
It has to be done before the tenth, though.
Have you done for the tenth, correct?
Sure, one is um. Because statutorily, the sheriff's office is, the sheriff is responsible for courthouse security, so is he also, has he signed off on this as well?
This, this would be tied in with the courthouse security apparatus as it already is, this would just be an additional part of that.
Is that why you have to have a meeting with everybody?
Yes, technically, um and so, so the dress alarms that we're putting over there, we're gonna be the ones we have in our office over there already. Uh but there'll be a new, some new key card accesses and cameras, those are all tied in by fiber. Across the street to the, to the bigger courthouse security system, uh which Corporal Cypress, I guess, is kind of in in charge of. Uh so Corporal Cypress will actually be lifted as the project director on this grant, so it'll all, it'll just be an additional amount of money into what he's already gotten. For the courthouse security improvements that he's already applied for, um so it'll be. Basically run administered by the courthouse security um team, the courthouse, the sheriff's department. Uh but it'll be for the probation, it'll just be additional for probation office.
And I did ask to contact Sheriff Friendly to come over here, uh I don't know what.
He is otherwise engaged.
Okay.
And and I think that Sheriff Friendly was wondering why he wasn't included in being last week. I'm not quite sure what happened there, I had a call the day before, just happened from Judge Blake and said, hey, Art Angers from Charleston, our IT guy, and that person's gonna be here. In the next day or the day after, maybe in two days ahead of time. Uh and when I showed up, there were a bunch of people there and and I didn't know that Sheriff Friendly wasn't invited or wasn't there for a reason. But I also know that the day that we were there, he was in federal court for one of the cases for the personnel issue that they had in the past, so. He might not be able to make it anyway, um so I don't, I don't know that it was intentional slight, I think it was just that we got as many people there as we could to make it work as. Make it work as quick as we could.
And so this grant is is just for security, not for any of the other improvements that you guys are seeing.
No, just for just for the security apparatuses, um and and that's really the only part that the court gets involved in. Is the security of it, because it is a court facility, um they get involved in the security part of it, they do, they do security audits. Um so uh like they would have anything to do with any of your, any of your other facilities anywhere else but the courthouse, they wanna make sure the courthouse is secure. Because their court activity is being held in that, or the court, that is your concern, court activities in the probation department. They ought to pay the court, the payment court building, they would all that building, they not this building. Um and they make, there's recommendations and there's and there's um requests for courthouse security. Based on what the state Supreme Board deals, and I guess probably state code allows them to do.
Yeah, I have two questions, first, is there a match?
I don't think there needs to be a match, because this is a grant, and it just wanna pay for the the actual equipment and installation itself. So it's gonna be uh leave nine cameras, three key card readers, a panic button in the reception area. And then the rest, everything else is gonna be, panic buttons are already there, they're getting moved over there. And there won't be need to be match for anything but the security equipment, because this is strictly a security grant for security equipment.
What he means is sometimes these grants require.
Ten percent, twenty percent.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't believe there is.
But if it doesn't say in there, then it's probably not.
I don't believe that there is, and Corporal Cypress could probably tell you more about it, because he's just done this for for the main courthouse.
A S S grant that everyone's applying for for law enforcement or cybersecurity, safety, security, courthouse security, there is no match to that.
This is just, on the application, it's just listed as court security fund grant program. And and I have to apologize for ignorance to it, because it was never ready to deal with it before, I kind of got burned in with EVN's with my hands on my back, so. So I've been, I've been trying to get this done as quick as possible, so that for everybody's mutual benefit, so we can give it all put together.
Second question, other than the two panic switches that you're gonna take, what else can you take from next door?
We already, we already have dress buttons in everybody's office, um the little buttons about that big. So so and Corporal Cypress told Mr. Sizemore that those, that those will transfer. Uh Mister Mister Cypress, Corporal Cypress was, um I texted him and as a favor to me, he came on his day off and and brought some of the paperwork and things to. Officer Sizemore while I was off sick on Monday, uh and he told him that all that stuff will move over. Now, the the cameras, so the doors, I think, the access things to the doors, I don't think those are allowed to move for some. Reason, I don't remember what exactly.
The sheriff.
Yeah.
He he's gonna wanna tell you what should stay and what needs to.
And I I think there's something to do with whatever money was maybe used to buy that, that there's a rule that once it's installed. Then you can't take it and move it, but like the dress alarm, those. Then you can't take it and move it. But like the dress alarm, those, those are portable. So like.
Walls are about fifteen inches thick too.
So, uh, like I said, those are all questions that I don't, I don't have the answer to just because I, I, like I said, I got thrown kind of in the deep end.
And what's the total on the grant?
The, the total requested funds would be just based on K T S's, um, estimate from yesterday. Fourteen thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars for equipment installation, testing and everything that would go with that. Uh, and that's nine security cameras, three, uh, electronic locks and the entry systems and an extra dress button for the reception area in the front part of the building.
And then after that, you guys are totally ready to move?
And I can't answer that part. I don't know.
Now, the, the other part is, um, I'm trying to just make it quick. So that this has to be put in prior to anything else is done. This is something that.
I was, I was getting ready. I was reading through this a little bit before. Came over, um, like I said, this was being done Monday while I was sick. Um, and it basically gives a timeline of everything to be put in, installed and every, and all parties inspected and moved in by a certain date and all that kind of stuff. And I think that's probably just part of the grant process where you have to have a timeline of when this money is gonna get here, how it's gonna be spent, when it's gonna be spent. And who's gonna sign off, who's gonna sign off that it's been done properly before it's signed and delivered. Um, and, and that's all here in, in the packet as far as that goes. Um, and I'm wanting to say it's like July to like September or some, something like that because the, the funds will be given out like July first, I think. So I think it was like July to like September first or something like that. And there were different benchmarks for, you know, money received. Um, purchase order to K T S and so on down, down the pipe. And then all the parties would get to go and inspect the work and make sure all the work was done correctly, make sure the cameras are handled the way they need to be and all that kind of stuff.
Well, my question was, is, is we, I requested a letter about whether we can move forward or not and any stipulations on moving forward? I mean, so are.
That's something you have to talk to the Chief Judge about.
Okay.
Um, Chief Judge gave me this grant that he got from the Director of Court Security in Charleston on Friday and said, here, I'm, I'm gonna be out of the office for a few days. Get to work on this. And so that's what I, um, I was told that he'll be back tomorrow. Um, so that's probably a question for him to answer.
Okay.
Uh, about the status of that letter. Uh, I know the letter you're referring to, we were talking about in our meeting and after that, I don't. I don't know what the status of that letter is, so I don't wanna speak for the judge.
Well, I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page is what I want.
Yeah, and, and I think, I think going forward, I think that's what we all want. I think we all wanna be on the same page and just communicate. Does it serve everybody's mutual benefit?
No, I, you know, if, we started immediately on it.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we started a meeting on trying to do ju- justice and, and getting it done.
It was our idea to acquire more space because of the expansion of this court programs. And it's a mystery to me. Why Judge Blake thinks that this commission does not support the court program.
And, and like, once again, I, 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 I don't want to speak for Judge Blake.
I'm not asking you to.
Yeah.
I know that, I know what you're dealing with, but I'm saying for everybody's knowledge, we support Day Report Center. We hired the best possible person in. And she's here. We support drug court and family treatment court and, and the teen court and all that stuff. We highly support it. How could I not support it? That's what I do, you know? So, you know, for the rumors, and I know exactly how they started and they started when we were looking to hire new Day Report Director. I know how they started and they are patently false. And, um, you know, we, we are the ones who said, we have court programs, Freeport keeps adding new programs. We've gotta find a place to house these people. You know, we're the ones who did that. We paid out a commission budget without even talking to anybody, bought a building. You know, to try to make this happen, expand space within the courthouse, so.
And, and, and we, we appreciate it.
I know.
Uh, the probation staff appreciates it.
Even Harry.
And, and so the probation staff appreciates it and, and, um, and I, and I've said my fifteen years of being here in Fayette County, I've always had good dealings with the commission, what limited, limited exposure I've had with the commission. Uh, and I think that's good that I've had to have limited exposure every month. We've not needed to have this kind of assistance in the past. So, um, but things have changed, things have grown. Um, you know, we're gonna double the size of what we were when I first started here fifteen years ago. Uh, but that means with more court programs that we're hopefully changing, changing the pilot, the way things are going in the county as far as criminal justice. And that's helping to save taxpayers in the county together, money all the way around. Um, our D R C, like you said, our D R C has got a great director, we've got a great program going on. We're all working well together. All of our community, uh, treatment programs that God are doing great. Um, so I think this is one more step to making the whole picture the way it needs to be, so. Um, I appreciate any assistance. Y'all can help in the next few days to try and get this back out and hopefully we can get this, this working. So.
Have, have all of the telephone lines been put in? You can use the existing ones that are there, the computer network stuff. See, we wanted, you mentioned taxpayer.
Uh huh.
So I wanna know how much more it's gonna cost the taxpayer of Fayette County to get you in that building?
Well, that's, that's the thing is, is that I'm kind of in the, in the, in the middle of the food chain. Um, and the, the I T person from Charleston was there, um, from what, from what my raw understanding of it is, is that the I T stuff will be set up by our I T people. And, and the equipment will be our equipment and, and I don't think that anything will have to come out of the county's dime for that.
Okay, so from what you just said, your I T people's gonna take care of everything.
From, from what I understand.
And they'll have your equipment and all that stuff, so that lets the taxpayers off then. As far as I'm concerned.
So from, from what I understand so far, but like I said, I'm, I'm middle of the food chain at best and I'm not sure what, is that for middle or the lower middle? So, um, all I know is that I, I've got a, a goal of kind of what we're trying to do to, to help the county and to help state in general with the, with the population of offenders that we're trying to deal with. And trying to keep the public safe. Uh, but the, the dollars and cents is something I've never had to worry about until now, so. Um, I'm figuring it out as I go along and, and hopefully if I have an answer or anything changes, I can update y'all sooner than that. So.
Does anybody else have any other questions or?
No, no, um, and Jared, we know that you're not the decision maker here on a lot of this stuff and appreciate your coming to, to update us on this. Um, but in case the rumor is going around that we don't, you know, besides with Judge Blake, that we don't care about this program, I want you to know that's, that's wrong.
I, I've not heard that. And, and honestly, um, with, with me working with Judge Blake as closely as I do, I don't think that he feels that way. Um, do I think there may be some misunderstanding about a couple of things probably, but I don't think that he feels that way either. Um, so.
But because this is, we understand the importance of this.
Yeah.
And, you know, me more than anybody, and my colleague is very receptive to, you know, hearing about it and learning.
And I, and I, I've learned not to trust anything I really hear in a courthouse because.
Yeah.
You know, it's like a game of telephone. You tell to one person, by the time it gets in the chain, what it actually said. It's probably different than what actually was said, so, you know, like I said, to me, it's all misunderstanding and, and as long as we get it fixed and get it running the way it needs to be. And then that's all that matters.
Yeah, that's why we're here at this meeting today.
Correct.
All right, so, um, just please keep Ruth apprised, like she'll be your contact on everything.
I will.
Um.
I wouldn't contact it.
You know.
Uh, you're right. I agree with you. Nobody else but Ruth.
If, if there's a meeting, you get a last minute meeting, if, if you told Ruth, Ruth would say, if I want to invite Sheriff for something like she'd know.
Yeah.
So she'll be a huge resource to you as this goes forward.
Yeah. Uh, like I said, I'm, I'm still figuring it out myself. This is the first in-depth grant that I've been involved with in my career and I don't know how I've got this long and not had to do it before, but.
Jim, I had to write it for you. That's, I couldn't figure.
Yeah, yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't have a better person to, to help me. He did ninety-five, ninety-nine percent of it. So I'm, I'm really glad that he was around and available to do it for me, so.
Do we need, we need to approve the grant then, right? So I moved that we approved the, um, court internet security grant for the chief of probation to apply.
Next Wednesday, we can do that.
You might have to come in and sign because if I decide to put a mission grant that's signature.
Yeah, it's got rare on front page.
When you call, I'll run in.
Okay.
Should be some, uh, conditions and assurances.
Yeah, they're, I think they're all in here and like I said. I was running around trying to get people, there are a few people that have to write a couple of little letters and stuff in here and I'm going around and do that and being an A P S guy and. And Jim kind of hands him the, and he said, I'm not gonna be here in the morning, I have a medical appointment. So I'm planning on being here this afternoon and tomorrow to help me. Tie, tie the loose end though. And be able to talk with Judge Blake and get all that stuff where they.
Okay.
Right.
Well, let's be sure to thank Corporal Cypress for his help too.
Oh, absolutely. I plan on writing a letter to the sheriff, thanking him.
He's already made it, but he made the motion.
She made the motion. Thank you, second.
I was waiting, John. I was second. All in favor?
Uh huh.
Yeah, I have a thing he was done about because.
Good, people were talking.
Is there a draft? Uh, we have a timeline, that's it, because he wants to know your thoughts on moving forward with all those plans. He requested a letter about it.
So that's, that's why I requested a letter to see if we can move forward.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, that, you know.
Well, I, I plan on talking to him tomorrow morning, the first thing. Uh, I don't know.
He'll probably get the letter on the seventeenth when we meet again, since we have.
Okay, that's fine. And we'll have this in by then, but I'll tell him verbally you guys voted to support it and, and, and go from there.
Well, yeah, the grant's good to go, but as far as our letter, we have to vote on every letter we write too. So, um, but until we get his letter, we can't get our letter, so we'll keep that on the seventeenth at our next.
We, we should need to know what we can do from here on out.
Okay.
That's what I wanted.
Appreciate that. I'm excited. If you have any concerns, ever get hold of me or get hold of Michelle.
Right, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right.
Jared, to you.
All right.
Yeah, uh, is, uh. Why don't we go ahead and, that's at ten thirty. Why don't we go ahead and do Teresa's request?
Do you need corrections?
Okay, number seven. Yeah, okay. Okay, I, I, we, yeah.
You're up. D R C.
Come on, Teresa. You are the fearless leader.
Go ahead.
I'm not waiting. We, um, I have the birthday.
Just good. Okay, so, um, essentially what, um. We're doing at, at the Day Report Center, we had a board meeting yesterday, uh, to approve these changes. Uh, first, and this was the, the commission, I believe, previously approved Dalton Kincaid. Uh, his job classification being changed, his title being changed.
Yes.
Uh, is now wanting to be the Deputy Director, it will be Teresa's second one and assume responsibility for management when Teresa is absent. Um, the board approved his promotion. Um, his salary is going to be forty-four thousand dollars. Technically, this is a new hire since he's changing positions, so that's why we're here. Except I believe the county commission previously approved that. And the forty-four thousand dollars is in Teresa's budget to pay Chief Kincaid. Kelly Henty, uh, has been working for the Day Report Center as Program Assistant. She interviewed for the case manager position, uh, the board voted to extend the offer and pointed to her. Uh, Teresa's budget for this position was thirty-five to thirty-seven thousand. The board voted, uh, to pay her thirty-nine thousand. Um, the reason for this is that basically both cases, the positions were budgeted between thirty-five and thirty-seven. Um, and the board felt like, um, with the other employee that we were offered the position to, we were kind of in a one-word position of offering somebody who had not worked at the Day Report Center. Almost as much money as what we were offering somebody who, um, had been there for, she's been there now since October. Um, so we asked Teresa during the board meeting if she had the ability to come up with this two thousand dollars. She's budgeted for thirty-seven. We asked if she had the ability to come up with the additional two thousand. Uh, based on my conversation with Teresa, she doesn't think that that will be a problem. One of the things that Miss Henty is going to do is, um. We have not had a B I P S program in a rather significant length of time. B I P S is the batterer's intervention program. It's a very intensive. It's what, thirty-two? It's a thirty-two weeks long?
It's a good moneymaker too, because Nicholas County sends people here, other counties send people here to do that program.
And that's, Kelly is going to be undergoing the training. Kelly will be the one teaching the class, so her taking the steps to have this additional skill set added to her. I think just positive, and it also will provide a revenue stream that should cover the two thousand miler increase. So, so the board voted to offer the case manager position to Miss Henty at thirty-nine thousand dollars annually. Um, Jerry Walton was the other candidate that the board voted to, um. Uh, offered the other case manager position to, um, Mr. Walton has extensive experience in the corrections industry. He has worked at Mount Olive for the Division of Corrections. And then, um, at some point during his, uh, career. He switched over to the private contractor that provides services from the Division of Corrections, although he continued to maintain his employment.
Did you know him there?
And.
Actually, I did. Um, he called me and asked me about. I called it, yeah, sure. Running the platform. Yeah, he worked for me, which is a short period of time before he came out of uniform, where he has several, and I've already been there. Worked for me for a couple of years and worked in any of the industry because I was one of the areas that I was in Georgia. And then they saw his building and they snatched him up right away.
So that's, that's a good, that's a good sign.
But with his corrections experience, um, and the fact that. He's taken. Take cut. Uh, take the job, you can announce. Um, I did not do background checks on Mr. Kincaid or Miss Henty as they were already employed. Uh, Mr. Walton's background check came back negative. There's nothing there. It's, you would probably expect him, how he's been employed now for, um. It's fifteen.
Fourteen.
Okay, fifteen years. So, um, on behalf of Teresa, we're asking the county commission to approve the hire of Dalton Kincaid as Deputy Director for the Day Report Center. At a salary of forty-four thousand dollars a year for the hire. And do you guys wanna do this one at a time?
Yeah, uh, so moved.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
Um, on behalf of Ms. Gregory and the board, I'm also asking the county commission to approve the, the hiring of Kelly Henty. As a case manager for the Day Report Center at an annual salary of thirty-nine thousand dollars per year and with a salary that is two thousand dollars over the budgeted amount.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Uh.
And lastly, on behalf of Ms. Gregory and the Day Report Center, um, asking the county commission to approve the hire of Jerry Walton as a, a case manager at an annual salary of thirty-seven thousand dollars a year.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
We'll see about the day.
Um, for Dalton and Kelly, I would imagine would be today, you can say are.
Already on board?
Already on board. Um, I'm gonna have to get back with, I don't know that Jerry is.
Those, those, that's the only thing to give a sense of.
Jerry's gonna have to turn in his notice and give us a start, give them a stop date and give us a start date. But as far as Dalton and Kelly, we'll be today.
Ask you. Congratulations. Finally have a full staff on this.
And, and just a question, are you still looking to have another location down the valley?
I will. I'll, I'll make some more calls to Mayor Emmer and see, uh, if he has the space still available. And there was one other, uh, building, it was in a county that was possibly going to be available, so I'll get back in touch with him and get some numbers and get a, a budget together.
I had to put a budget in and we, we heard Ruth had sat down and then presented to the commission.
Are we gonna try to do something with Canola County to cover, uh, the valley?
I think, well, I think we've already discussed that in a way and I, you wanna elaborate just a short version of that?
Um, Canola County's, thanks for, man, it's, it's a good bit different than ours. Um. I tried to reach out a couple times, do that, never ran those things, that's. However, I did find out that, um, the D H R. In, you know, the Canola County uses not the Day Report for their documents. They use one location, one location only, centralized to the county. And I'm sure that they, I've already put out a couple of phone calls and they said, yes, they would be interested in dating a post.
I have an idea. I think once we get it set up, um, we. I have an idea. I think once we get it set up, um, we should send a letter to the judges in Canola County and let them know we're open for business.
And the magistrates.
And the magistrates, so they can send people somewhere closer and, and just let them know. Um, because I think, you know, judges are gonna do what they want to do. So if they want to make an exception, like, you know, when our judges decide whether they're gonna let somebody test a necklace or whatever, you know, they make that decision. So if somebody's saying, I can't afford to come to Charleston, or I can't get to Charleston.
I can't really have a blind, getting a force there and they would not go after us. And I didn't really stay that long.
Well, it'd be good for, yeah, it would be good.
Yeah, maybe it's quality.
Yeah, and I mean, it's hard to say, it's hard to say, but, but whatever the reason, um, we're providing them another option and, um, and our programming is another option. So, you know, they, they're not gonna want to put a hardship on people trying, as you know, trying to, um, get their act together. They want them to be able to serve first at home and report at home. So I think we just need to let them know and maybe have you make a presentation up there once it's time. If anybody has, wants to attend it during lunch or something and have questions. I know that terrifies you, but. But, uh, or Anthony can do it on behalf of the community corrections board. But either way, you know, just pitch them and just let them know this program's available, you know, and.
I'll give you more than one minutes.
Yeah.
Well, you always take more anyway.
And they did that yesterday, they were difficult to perceive in the budget. Us, we had two vans in the shop right now. One of them is a mother fix, but it's the old thing. We were, we were limping, we were limping, so I'm gonna let everybody know how much going to be. Have you been to Litchfield? Have you been?
No. Kevin, could you help her? Kevin knows where to find him.
Um. Bless you all.
Yeah, he's already been, he's helped us find several. We've had this problem at several departments.
Um, and just for example, we don't have any available today, but we still have half a building participants because they're even around the bus or they're by the runway. Because they want to meet their requirements, they want to be the benchmarks for their probation, for their dad, or for their workers, so, um. And, and we've got a lot of one on our, but then the good thing.
And if you need to talk to us, we have administrative meetings, just reach out to Ruth and she'll set you up if you need to update us. You know, it doesn't require a decision, then we can.
Alright, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was reading something from John, I'm sorry. John, you shouldn't do that to me. Alright, uh, it's, it's not ten thirty yet. Do we have something else we can do, Ruth?
Yeah, I have a draft on my laptop, because I know Alice, I won't send it.
Yeah.
Well, you just wanna, since she's gonna look over and change it, do you want to?
Do you want to hit me your laptop? Um, that one, uh, number nine, I moved that we postponed, what's our first June meeting? Does anybody know?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Really? Not till the fourteenth?
Right.
Well, I'm still gonna move that we postpone items, uh, nine, the board member appointments to the June fourteenth meeting.
Second, all in favor? I thought you had to do it.
Better second.
Well, I've been waiting on you to do it, and.
We both did same time, yeah.
Oh, this one. Yes, that.
We've already done number ten.
Yeah.
I only have one, there's still nine on one.
So we got. We got just a couple minutes. Now, I'll read, I'll finish three minutes and she'll do that real quick. Who's that front? Uh. If I found it again. Um, here, who's in front of that?
They've had several meetings with the E P already.
Well, I wanted to that.
But I talked to Jeff the other day, and Jeff has already talked to Mike, and I was gonna call Mike again. But Mike and A E P have got together with their, um, group in Ohio, or their main office in Ohio, to see if they can add more to this, and that's why it's taking so long. And the group on Ohio is gonna see if they can expand it into other areas of Bay County and another county. I don't know which county that, that they was talking about. So I have, I have, uh, followed up with Jeff, uh, on this. Jeff let me know just the other day.
It's funny that, that he hasn't reached out to you as many times as you and Ruth have reached out to him.
Yeah, no, I, but I think what it is, he's waiting on A E P's corporate office to make the decisions. Like I told Jeff, it's, we only got so much time.
Yeah, those grants are in the bill.
Yes, of course.
So, so much time on this. We're not holding you guys up, are we?
No.
Okay. It was sent all over this week. I'm gonna text him for, um. And they may be trying to work this where, I mean, if we're talking about a cost in the county list, and the same stuff, I mean, I, I think it's what, I think it's what we're going out to reach more. Yeah, but then Ruth had told me some other things about the matching grant. What way the lot in? That's a good one. Should we do that at the next meeting? It was at the beginning from that, that, uh, I missed, uh, and then Charleston. I would get it. It was emailed to me too, right?
Yeah.
And it was, I'll be now, okay. Not yet, no. We need to do that, yeah. She's done it pretty well, yeah. So, it missed out. It was not agenda, like, whatever, agenda.
Got it. So, so Anthony. You know what I'm getting at with this. You'll know what I'm getting at.
Yeah. Who can do that in seventeen, I think. Are you, are you done with Mr. Elder?
Yeah, I don't have an actually look at it real quick.
Okay. Hey, you sound better again today.
Yeah, you sound, I do sound like that.
Hey, I'm on the best sleep yet. Almost. You almost sounded like Alice.
Oh, good.
Just hand, I have.
I'm starting your.
Alright. Just tell you.
Well, Amy's just fixing the format on that.
Okay. Okay, I guess.
Let's go ahead and get to ten.
Yeah, alright, uh, Kevin, somebody there.
Chad.
Kevin, somebody, I got, got four, five, four, five y'all in here. I just wanna see, it's not, Kevin, I guess.
Sandra is the person on this first. Someone, okay.
Boy, commission, thanks for allowing us to come up and present this morning. We're bringing before the commission a request to have the commission pass the resolution to allow our emergency nine-one-one telecommunicators to go into the West Virginia Emergency Service Retirement System. Uh, this morning I have a sustainable guest with us. I have our executive director of West Virginia nine-one-one, Mr. B Meadows, Johnny Russper, Metro nine-one-one director, and Mr. Russell Emmer, uh, Metro Deputy Director. Free for them are the subject matter experts that have been working since day one with the retirement board through legislation to get this approved and passed through legislation. So I'd like to bring them gentlemen forward to give you the dues and the dues cans and cans of the retirements.
And the ones that can answer the questions. These two have, these two have right here. That's, that's what I want.
Thanks for coming down and.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you last year. Actually, I came up, I'm the, uh, for thirty-one years with the, uh, director of Waltham County. I'm retired in July twenty-two. And then to go with it, thank you, and to go with the assistance of the council. And just to let you know what I said, we're much like, the council, much like, much like the County Commission Association, Association of Counties does. Uh, all of the nine-one-one directors of the state paying dues into it, and the dues go, part of the dues go to pay my salaries. So we're not, we don't work for the state, you know, I work for the counties, actually, for y'all, in essence, could, and they'll pay, uh, my salary. But what we're working at for, and we've been working this for years, and now we've finally come to the point where we're better than we've ever been with the retirement system for nine-one-one. And the reason being that we've done this, so we've seen that nine-one-one is, of course, a very effective job. In twenty-twenty-one, the legislature actually made nine-one-one, uh, dispatcher as a first responders. And so because of that, we were able to talk to the, uh, retirement board about moving the system. We, we looked at it for years, it is Johnny, and, and I especially worked for over six years trying to get a retirement system. So we finally worked with them, the, the board, and then instead of creating, recreating the wheel or whatever, we have decided to go into the EMS services, which is American Medical Services, where the, where the EMS personnel are, because it works out very well. And I've got some, uh, some paperwork here to show you what exactly the changes are to that and what we showed, what the difference would be. Last year, the legislature session, the legislature did pass to allow nine-one-one parents to go into this, but only new employees that were hired after July third. Those are the ones who are allowed to go in the system. So if you hired anybody to go out first, and if the county commission had passed the resolution, they were able to move into this system. And the biggest one system is at age fifty and twenty years of, uh, service, you could retire as a, as an all-disbacked, which is, uh, you know, there's a lot of other, uh, perks, much more than that in the system. But that is one of the main things, about fifty years, fifty years old, twenty years of service, uh, is, would be, um, and, and that's, and what we have found out is that it's been a great, uh, recruitment tool to go to and say, and when given benefits to nine-one-one, dispatcher who are hired, but not only that, a great retention tool to be able to keep folks. Just give you a, a quick, some quick numbers here statewide, uh, employees under ten years of service in nine-one-one, there's sixty percent, sixty-six percent of employees that are under that point. There's thirty-four percent that are on the team, they're starting to run nine-one-one because they're leaving, they're not. Uh, of course, we know pay always has an issue, but we feel like with good benefits, good retirement plan, we think it's gonna be a good retention. It's gonna help people to stay more in the system. Also have a map of the, um, counties, what other counties at the end of this point. What we're asking the Bay County Commission to do is to pass the resolution that was adopted last year by the, by the legislature, putting your new employees into, in the position, if they're hired after July one, they will be allowed to go in this system. We have legislation, but we got so close to getting it passed this year, uh, the House, uh, attorneys, the House of Justice attorneys found a glitch in it that they did not care for, so the House did not pass it. There's, if there's gonna be a special session, we've been told it's a good possibility that our deal would be on special session. But when we went to the retirement board, they said, why have more counties not signed the resolution from last year? Uh, how, how can we be assured that the county's gonna want to go forward with, uh, with this when they haven't even signed a resolution from last year? So we've been going to counties and speaking to them and hoping to get them to realize when passed this resolution, it's gonna help us going forward with getting the deal passed and, uh, and then be able to get all the employees in the system.
Yeah, this doesn't count authorities, right? I mean, how does it work with authorities?
As far as the.
The, um.
Like Raleigh County.
Yeah, Raleigh County.
Oh, yeah, they, they're, they're dispatchers that still, yeah, yeah, they would pass, yeah.
Okay, I was just curious whether.
Sure, they would have to pass as well.
Okay.
And actually, we're leaving there and going down. Here, so leaving it there. So, yeah, but it's, that's right. So once we're, get this, you know, in place, and the base, and the board can see, the, but, um, the retirement board can see that we thought county's not moving. Um, and as you see, the biggest change for you as an employer is gonna be going from nine percent to nine point five percent of what you would, uh, be referring to before. That's only half a percent. Uh, after that, it falls on to the, uh, employee goes from six percent to eight and a half percent. But you're gonna go only one half a percent.
So Ruth, have you looked at what that changes the budget?
Maybe a half a percent.
It's not much, but still, I mean, okay.
I can give you, uh, I can give you a, uh, just a little, uh, uh, it may, it's not official yet, it may, it may, it's not, I'm not sure, but your actual revenues will go up three, at over three and a half percent this year with the wireless. The Public Service Commission has not announced that yet, but it is coming. And I would rather them tell you that officially. I can tell you unofficially, your revenue's gonna raise to any time.
Well, we was curious about that. I mean, we've been talking about that for a few months, so we was curious about what they was gonna do.
Well, it's gonna be about three and a half percent, and that'll take place July first, though. Uh, they haven't announced that because their attorney's at, well, that's one, but, uh, I'm a piece of that, they doesn't. So, I mean, it's, it's not like it's gonna be a, a charge.
Yeah, and a half percent, I mean, I, I don't see a problem with it. I don't know the, the two commissioners see it, but, uh, I know the budget pretty well for the nine-one-one center. I always rely on Ruth to give me the second, second, uh, look at it. But I don't know the, the two commissioners, if they have any other questions.
Well, my questions are, um, for Tanya and Phillip, have you guys discussed this with the staff out there?
Yeah. So. Excuse me, we were talking about this morning, and, you know, the minute I mentioned some of the changes that Mr. Meadows is talking about, they perครa, they're like, oh, this is off. And from our standpoint, it's just, again, like Dean said, recruiting and retention, ultimately.
Oh, yeah.
These struggles, these digital factors, and this is a big thing.
So, so this is just to grant them the option, right? We're not, we're not saying that they have to convert to it. That's gonna be their choice.
Correct. Kind of, yeah, sure, absolutely, yeah. So, uh, what's for you today is only for new employees hired after this stage. Um, but we're, that map, we're hoping, as a, because I also represent the council and vice president, uh, it's an unpaid position, just a voluntary position. But, um, the legislature has, is, um, writing a bill that we're working on with the council to give existing employees exactly that, the option to move there. That would have to be voted on by each county. That was one of the technicalities, that they want to make sure it goes back to each commission, and you guys have the option to let your existing in or not. And then the employee votes themselves, they are not mandated. However, for new employees, it becomes their system. So it is mandatory that new employees go into it.
What kind of, um, confusion is that gonna cause for payroll?
Our new payroll system?
That's good. I mean, are you guys comfortable with that? Have you already decided this is what direction you are going to be there? So when it comes, you guys would probably join it?
I would.
But Tony's been here long.
He was great with it.
Yeah, I mean, the benefits look really good. I mean, I was looking through here, of course, I didn't know that Furs had some of these until I read. I was like, oh, they have that? I need to talk about my military service.
I would almost go back to work to join it.
Well, I know, I was thinking, well, maybe, if I'm not being a commissioner, I'll apply for a job. Um, but, yeah, I mean, it, it does look like a really good plan. I mean, ultimately, our, our bottom line question is, what's it gonna cost to pack there?
Right. You, you know, and I can just speak from a different, a little different perspective. I was with the sheriff's office in Canola County for thirty-five years, actually, the sheriff for a while. And, uh, what the retirement plan did for the sheriff's office was completely professionalism. It went from, uh, took it out of one concept, but into more professionalization. And from my perspective, uh, this isn't, I love our dispatchers, I love my dispatchers in Canola County, but this is about, what you said a minute ago, this is about the citizens. This is about keeping people, when one of your loved ones has a heart attack and they're laying on the floor and you have to get CPR with a phone, do you want a six-month employee? Or do you want a ten-year employee walking through that? This is all about the citizens.
To acquire.
Yeah. Yeah.
You have this issue even retaining deputies.
Right, exactly, yeah, this, this is about citizens, to me, taking care of our people.
Let's give you, uh, let you know about the investment part of it, on the year's investment principles.
Okay, one other question was if there's a vesting period, and, um, vesting period for this is similar to Furs one, if you do the five years. Um, first two that your new dispatchers are going into, if this is not passed, is a ten year vesting period, so this brings it back in line with what, uh, Furs one, five years. But the way the bill is written, um, and what we hope will be passed, there's no additional requirement beyond what they already earned. So the existing employee won't have to work anymore for them, they had to in Furs one either, so that if they have five years, they'll already be vested. Given, I think, Furs two is about five years, it's fine, no one will not be vested. New employees, of course, will have to work five years to be vested.
Yeah, I feel that it's a good move, uh, for the state as well as for emergency services, so I would make a motion to approve.
Hiring all the new hires into this retirement program?
Yes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi. Thanks very much.
Thanks for coming up and, and if you would, I appreciate your being available for employees once they.
Actually, I, actually, we plan on going as much as we need to statewide to entering flex, we'll be available, we'll be available, yeah.
Does that mean, you know, you know, retirement, that's hard to understand.
Your two other people here too, I appreciate it.
Especially when the often promised for existing employees to vote in or out, we want to be able, um, give them, answer as many questions as possible.
Be a lot of trepidation, I'm glad that it's keeping their time because I know that, um, can't remember, our health department opted out.
Mm-hmm.
Of the Department of Personnel, or is it D O P, is, am I saying that right? Division of Personnels, um, Furs, because they wanted more freedom over hiring. But in doing so, I think they didn't consider that all of their leave wasn't gonna transfer, and there were a lot of things that didn't happen and the people who worked there really suffered the result.
We, we wrote this bill internally, Russell did most of the work, and we, we talked to them, we're operators and executive directors throughout the state and tried to address to make sure. Everyone was made whole, no one wants anything, it was just to their advantage all the way around.
No one has a skin that did, some may say the same, no one's gonna lose, no one's gonna lose, like, one of the, one of the good options of it is, right now, there is a, uh, the factor is two point oh, it goes to two point seven five. They have the options to buy back to get everything, so, but they don't have to. So if there's ten years of two point oh, and you're working another ten years to be two point seven five, it can only raise their, their shovel in, in, either way they go.
Well, thank you for advocating on their behalf, appreciate it, cause I mean, we need all the tools we can to recruit and retain.
Absolutely, we're very happy.
Challenge says, as you see from the notes.
Yeah, thank you very much, thank you, appreciate it.
My car, I'm, so, yeah.
We, well, I personally, that me at all, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you.
I think you seem very important here.
She is, she's the CEO.
Yeah.
And I ran out of cards, but he's my boss.
Okay. At least you have an excuse for being an option, maybe, you know, that's right, with the boss.
Thank you very much.
No, I need to run it here, so.
I sent two, two guys down here and they were two gentlemen down there that struggled with the shift that y'all had and everything, yeah.
We had some, we had some departments, not the sheriff's department, it's not a little fans, and I tried to bring them in, they had no, uh, they had no idea what the nine one was. All right, Ruth?
Last thing is a formal request. The letter, okay, and this is, I requested this and, and we all wanted to get it on the agenda, um, during the August. Floods in Fayette County, um, City of Smithers have collected, solicited and collected funds on, on behalf of flood victims and we've seen or heard nothing about how those. Um, and that means flood victims, not just in Smithers, but in Fayette County proper, um, and we've heard nothing about how those funds have been dispersed or anything else. And would like to know, so we are just submitting a, a Freedom of Information Act request to the City of Smithers. From the Fayette County Commission, um, asking about the documents related to, uh, the funds collected and the dispersment and the process. Um, by which, uh, they dispersed the funds, like, how do you qualify for funds or not, um, and that sort of thing, and the names, addresses of the recipients, um. Since, um, some of those recipients should have been Fayette County recipients in addition to Smithers recipients, so that's what this agenda item is about. Uh, we've got changes to the letter, I basically added that last paragraph, that's the only thing you really need to focus on. Um, and it's, it was just being more specific about the dispersance to, uh, how people qualify, I wanna know what the plan was and is. I mean, we, we approve the letter, yeah.
Second, all in favor?
Uh.
Okay.
And Amy, we need to, um, send a copy of this to Brian Parsons, who's counsel for.
Okay.
City of.
Why we have this one? It is, just, that's mine, or maybe they made a copy for you, probably made a copy. All right, I'll explain it to you. That's it.
All right, move to John.
Second, go.